Good evening, and welcome to Thursday, August 13, 2020 Kern County Planning Commission Hearing. This meeting is officially being called to order. Madam Clerk, can you tell the roll call?
Mr. Ashling?
Here.
Mr. Judge?
Here.
Mr. McGiffney?
Here.
Ms. Githmore?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Simon?
Here.
Ms. Slaton?
And just for our record, I know that Mr. Hall is available, and he's on the virtual call today.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Murphy. The county of Kern provided notice that all as a result of declared federal, state, and local emergencies due to COVID-19 pandemic, and in light of the governor's order, this Kern County Planning Commission meeting is not physically open to the public. Testimony and general public comment are accepted via email or voice message to the clerk of the commission prior to tonight's meeting, and live comments via teleconference will be held during the meeting. If you're interested in providing comments on any items on this agenda and have not already received direction on how to do so, please contact the clerk at 862-8647. We will begin tonight's meeting with commission member announcements or reports, if any. Seeing none, I'll move on to approval of minutes from July 23 of 2020. May I have a motion or comment?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to cases withdrawn or request for continuance, we have item number three, GPA number three, I'll turn to Mr. Murphy today, or to Simon today to report on that.
Ms. Simon will be reporting on that and consent calendar this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Simon.
Thank you, thank you Chairman Josh. We have one case this evening that is requesting to be withdrawn, and this is item number three, GPA number three, MAP 125-31, Zone Change 9, MAP 125-31. And the applicant is Gateway Homes Inc. by Cornerstone Engineering.
Okay. Are there any comments from any public opinion prior to us moving on to making motions for this item?
Motion to approve or withdraw.
So, just for a point of order, because it was withdrawn by the applicant, we actually don't need a motion. There is no action that your commission can take. The applicant has withdrawn the request to be considered, so there is no action that you need for that particular item.
No action required, so we just bypass this and move on to next item? Okay, and then we'll move on to consent items. These are items scheduled before the planning commission which are being recommended for approval by the staff, and the applicant has been informed of any special conditions and has no objection. The hearing on these items may be expedited if no member of the commission or audience wishes to comment or ask questions on the case. We have three items on the agenda today, and Ms. Simon, I'll turn to you for those.
It is me, thank you Chairman Josh. The first item on the consent agenda is case number two, Conditional Use Permit Number Eight, MAP Number 27. The applicant is Wonderful Pistachios and Almonds LLC by QK Inc. The project is located approximately a half a mile from the intersection of Almond Road and Highway 33 in the unincorporated area of Lost Hills. The request tonight is a modification number two of Conditional Use Permit Number Eight, MAP Number 27. This would be to allow the expansion of the existing private airstrip to accommodate larger agricultural, industry aircraft, and to amend conditions of approval number five A, five B, and five C to allow the larger aircraft to utilize the expanded private airstrip in an A-zone district. Staff recommendation is to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring, measuring, monitoring program, and approve the modification number two of Conditional Use Permit Number Eight, MAP Number 27, subject to revised and original conditions of approval, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. The second item on the consent agenda is case number four, and it's Conditional Use Permit Number 23, MAP Number 99. The applicant is Four Creeks by Kyle Pereira. The project location is on the south side of Seventh Standard Road, approximately three miles east of Interstate 5 in the unincorporated Bakersfield area. The proposal is a new construction of a biomass energy conversion facility and an associated solar field on a 14-acre portion of a 240-acre parcel in an A-zone district. Staff would like to note that your commission did receive an addendum, staff report this evening requesting that this case be continued to August 27, 2020 agenda, and that would be in order for the Kern County Public Works Department to have adequate time to comment on this project and for staff to incorporate that into the staff report. Therefore, staff is recommending a continuance for this case to August 27 on the 2020 agenda. And the last item on the consent agenda this evening is item number five. This is Conditional Use Permit 27, MAP 196, Conditional Use Permit 41, MAP 213, Conditional Permit 22, MAP 214. This project is located approximately two miles west of State Route 14, south of Silver Cream Road, in the unincorporated area of Kern County. The applicant is Golden Queen Mining Company LLC by SESP Consulting. The request this evening is A, a modification of Conditional Use Permit Case Number 27, MAP Number 196, to allow an increase in disturbance area and an extension of the life of operations in an A1 and E2.5 acre district; to B, modification of Conditional Use Permit Number 41, MAP Number 213, to allow an increase in disturbance area and an extension of life of operations in an A1 district; and finally C, the modification of Conditional Use Permit Number 22, MAP 1, sorry, MAP 214, and this would be to increase the disturbance area and extension of life of operations in the A, AWE, and E2.5 RS districts. Your commission also received an addendum this evening that addresses additional comments that were received subsequent to the distribution of the staff report. In order to address those comments, staff is adding one new condition, and that is condition of approval 118 that would require the applicant to obtain all necessary permits and approvals from the Southern California Gas Company Distribution Department. Although the condition 118 was written into your addendum this evening, it has not been incorporated into the draft resolution as of yet. It is the intent of staff to have this condition incorporated into the final resolution. Staff continues to believe that the proposal demonstrates compliance with all required findings, and therefore, staff recommends the adoption of Section 15091, Facts, Findings of Fact, and Section 15093, Statement of Overriding Considerations, Adopt Mitigation Measure Monitoring Program, Approve Modification of Conditional Use Permits, Subject to the Revised Recommended Conditions, and Adopt the Suggested Findings as Set Forth in the Draft Resolution. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Simon, for that. Madam Clerk, with any public comments submitted on any consent items tonight?
Chairman Judge, we did not have any, although we do have one potential person that may want to provide a comment, I'm not sure. Mrs. Houlay, if you are on the phone, if you do want to provide a comment, you can star six and let us know. Otherwise, we would not have any. We were unsure if she was going to provide a comment or not.
Okay. I had wrote some comments regarding this change, and I'm a property owner in the same vicinity. What I'd like to just bring to attention is that there are some issues right now that involve damages and disturbance issues that really need attention and need to be fixed before we jump ahead on things that are going to create more disturbance. I did write down these issues. One is regarding a runoff that has damaged five entrance exits into Old Town Parcels. We had five roads coming in, now we only have two. This happens really bad during the rainy season. At this time, it's been dry, and going into winter, we'd like this to get fixed. We'd like to, and it's going to take figuring out in details with a professional attorney, being that there's more than myself involved. I'd like to bring that to attention. Also, we have had an abundant amount of rodents that are coming out from this mountain through blasting. They're going down further and further to relocate as the top blasts have been happening for numerous years, and now it's at a point that as they're going deeper, they are just flooding the area, trying to figure out where they're going to go. This is not safe, it's not healthy, and it's very destructive to people's property. This is another issue I'd like to just bring attention to, that this needs to get corrected before we go into more disturbance areas. This is not fair to local property owners, and it's something that will travel into the community, to the residents, the schools, the businesses. And right now with COVID-19 and so forth, we don't know all the roots of how this came about, but there's been a mention of rats, and that's more reason that we don't want to overlook this issue and cause more health issues in this vicinity. I'm just bringing attention to these. I've been up here before this project started, and I have seen the different stages it's taken us through. And, you know, if they need to further to get their different permits, that's one thing, but I do think that what's been damaged and destroyed needs attention first to show responsibility that they are going to correct and put things back to normal. Right now, we're the ones that are suffering, we're not getting any gain out of this, and at least to correct what's damaged would appreciate.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chairman, could I address staff?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy, do you want to address those issues, or you think we should vote on what's before us on our plate tonight, or should we return it and continue for staff to take a look at these items?
Commissioner Sprague to the chair. Staff is prepared to answer these questions. If your commission would like a more detailed explanation of the proposed project and how some of those are being addressed, I know the applicant is on the line to help answer that, and staff will be able to give a presentation. If that is your desire, I just recommend you pull this item off consent, and we'll hear it in its regular agenda item. I can tell you that many of the roadways are private, and we do not believe that the drainage is specifically associated with the site itself, but again, that is up to your commission. If you would like to have a staff report presented on this, and the applicant provide comments, and kind of go through our process, we'd be happy to do that, and if that's the case, we would just recommend that you pull the item and have it considered on its regular agenda as item number five.
I would survey the rest of the members on the dais to see what their wishes would be.
Would any of the fellow commissioners want to have this item pulled in here in its regular order, or any of the comments any commissioners may have?
I would be okay with having it pulled in here in regular order.
Okay.
Okay, with that, I then would, prior to moving on to making a motion on a consent item, I would ask that item to be removed and heard in its regular order, and then we can proceed forward. If there's no other items wanting to be pulled, if any item, we can make a motion on those.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we can, that we would pull item number five, that we would continue item number four, and that we would approve as read into the record item two, which also goes for item four and five, as read into the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague. I'll take a second on that.
I'll second that motion.
All ayes.
Okay, and moving on, we have--
I'm sorry, Chairman Judge.
Yes, sir.
Case number two is considered final, and so it is subject to appeal, so I'd like to read the appeal process for case number two.
That's what I was just going to get to--
Again, case number five will be considered.
I was going to get to right now, so I was going to ask you to do that right now, sir. Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
This is again related to case number two. For projects where the planning commission action is final, those actions are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors. By any interested person and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until after the final date of appeal. An appeal may be filed with the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department, located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $540 on forms that we have available at the Planning and Natural Resources Department. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of this hearing. I would also note that those appeal forms are available online. If no appeal is received, the action of the planning commission is final.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Moving on to public presentations, this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons designed to address our commission on any matter not on this agenda tonight, and over which commission has jurisdiction. Speaker has limited to two minutes, and Madam Clerk, is there anyone that would like to speak tonight on any item that's not on tonight's agenda?
Chairman Judge, there has been nobody that has requested to speak.
Okay, so we'll close the public presentation portion of this meeting, and move on to new cases, and we'll start with item number one, and back to me, Mrs. Simon.
Actually, I believe that Mr. Murphy is going to present that case for you this evening.
Okay, Mr. Murphy, please go to item number one first.
All right. Thank you again, Chairman Judge. So this project was originally scheduled to be considered by your commission on May 20th of 2020. However, it was referred back to allow staff the opportunity to review a groundwater, mounding, and nitrate analysis study that was requested by the Environmental Health Department. In addition, a complete read advertisement of the project was done by staff for tonight's hearing. The applicant for this project is Ken Mailer by Swanson Engineering. The specific request this evening is a Conditional Use Permit to allow a senior assisted living facility or retirement home for 32 elderly residents on a 2.71-acre vacant parcel in the Tehachapi area. And if we can get an aerial of the project site put on the overhead by staff, please. The development itself would include the construction of two 8,573-square-foot facilities that would total approximately 17,146 square feet. Each building would accommodate 16 residents. There would be common areas within those buildings that would include living rooms, activity rooms, a dining room, outdoor covered patio, a full-service kitchen, and then central restrooms for any visitors. The facility would include employees that would be on-site to operate the facility 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and at this time, the applicant has identified that visitation would be from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., again, seven days a week. Transportation services for the employees and the residents to and from the site are not proposed at this time, however, they could be allowed in the future. Water services and domestic water for the project site will be provided by the Golden Hills Community Services District, and then sewage disposal is proposed to be done through an engineered onsite septic system. This project itself is located in the Tehachapi area, near the intersection of State Route 202 and Shout Road, and the site itself is adjacent to, again, State Route 202, a number of residential homes in and around the area, the County Oaks Baptist Church, and then also the Tehachapi Valley United Methodist Church. Staff has received a number of comments from neighboring residents regarding this project, and they have expressed concern regarding its potential consideration and approval. In reviewing the comments, I do believe that there is a little bit of a misconception among the residents as to what this particular project is and how this facility would operate. So what I'd like to do now is take this opportunity to clarify what this proposed facility is. So again, this proposed project is classified as a retirement home per the Kern County zoning ordinance, and a residential care facility for the elderly by the state of California. Per the adopted Kern County zoning ordinance, a retirement home means a group housing arrangement chosen voluntarily by residents who are over 62 years of age, and who are provided varying levels of non-medical supportive services or care, and in which meals are provided in central eating facilities or prepared by employees of the retirement home and delivered to the individual living areas. And again, our definition in the zoning ordinance specified residential care facility for the elderly, Section 1500 of the California Health and Safety Code. So as a residential care facility, the site will require state licensing, and attached to an addendum staff report that we prepared for this evening is included a definition and a summary of what a residential care facility for the elderly is, and again, that was from the California Department of Healthcare Services website. So this facility is not regarded by the state as a healthcare facility, but rather as a social-based facility. Residents of these facilities are considered as living in their own home, not in a healthcare setting. The facility will be required to have licensed nursing staff either on-call or employed to provide the following services: provision of oversight of personal and supportive services, assistance with self-administration of medication, provide three meals a day plus snacks, housekeeping and laundry, transportation or arrangement of transportation, activities for the residents, and then again, skilled nursing services as needed. During the course of processing the request, a number of the adjacent property owners raised concerns regarding the proposed development. Specifically, there was a lot of concern regarding access to the facility and potential traffic impacts that would be, that would result if implemented and approved. And then additional concerns included water availability to the site, potential groundwater contamination, impacts to the aesthetics of the surrounding neighborhood, and then an overall sense of incompatibility of this proposed project at this location. So I'd like to address some of those comments and concerns to your commission this evening. The site plan before your commission tonight, this is a revision from the original submittal that the project applicant provided to us a year or two ago. The original access to the facility was proposed from Shout Road at the southern boundary of the proposed development. Access to this location would have meant that there would have been direct access across the street from the residential properties that are located on the south side of Shout, and all of those residents expressed concern that the car lighting going in and out of the facility could potentially shine in their respective homes. To address some of the traffic and visual concerns raised by the surrounding neighbors, the applicant redesigned the facility to take access off the east boundary at the location I'm referring to as the Shout Road knuckle. So if I could have staff, just for purposes of clarity, point out where the Shout Road knuckle is, so that the commission can understand exactly where proposed access is coming from So in consultation with the Public Works Department, it was determined that access at this site and at this location would be sufficient to address the needs of the facility, and also help to improve the knuckle as it exists today, to ensure that the appropriate visibility to drivers utilizing Shout Road. So specifically, when I went out and visited with the residents, a number of people indicated that they had concerns regarding Shout Road being a strip, maybe, a drive-through, and that with that knuckle and turn, people don't realize that the road turns right at that location, and there were incidents in where cars would go up on the embankment and would get near that property that is in that area, and the overall residents felt that it was a dangerous turn. With the implementation of this project and the appropriate improvements of that knuckle, that will clearly make it more visible so that people utilizing Shout Road will realize and see that it does dead-end, there's a driveway where they go into the facility, but that you would turn left if you wanted to continue on your way out to State Route 202. But anyway, the implementation from a traffic perspective of the project would require the payment of traffic impact fees, it would require improvements to Shout Road project frontage to type B subdivision standards, again, along then with the reconstruction of the existing knuckle to facilitate access to the site and to the County Oaks Baptist Church, which is located adjacent to the property. This proposed use is not expected to generate a significant amount of traffic, as many of the residents will not necessarily even have vehicles. And to put this in perspective, according to our zoning ordinance for a retirement home, we only require one parking space for every four residential beds. So that would be a total of eight parking spaces for the facility in terms of relating to the residents that would utilize the site. Regarding impacts to groundwater, if approved, implementation of this project will require annexation to the Golden Hills Community Services District for domestic water supply. Golden Hills CSD, in conjunction with the water master for the area, is charged with the managing of groundwater supplies to the various communities, and we did receive a will-serv letter indicating that the Golden Hills CSD would be able to provide domestic water to the site, provided that the site was annexed into their district boundaries. We do believe that that requirement is consistent with the adopted goals and policies of the Greater Tehachapi Area Specific and Community Plan. As previously specified, the project is proposing to utilize an engineered septic system for its sewage disposal. In review of the groundwater and nitrate mounding study prepared by the project, the Environmental Health Department determined the use of a Fujiclean 21 system would reduce nitrate levels to the appropriate levels so that they would not produce any significant impacts to the underlying groundwater and result in any impacts to the overall community. Most of the other comments submitted in opposition to the project specifically relate to the opinion from the surrounding residents that this project is incompatible with the existing uses, and specifically, statements that development of this type should be located in more urban areas of the community. In response to those comments, I respectfully disagree with those specific statements, and I'd like to elaborate on why. First, the proposed facility, again, is not a healthcare facility. It's a retirement community for elderly residents who need appropriate supportive services. While state requirements that will ensure licensed nursing staff are on-call, the facility, again, is designed for non-medical residents. The facility will house only 32 residents. When you compare that to a family of five, that facility equates to about six or seven homes. Given the use of these residents and the fact that they would have most likely limited vehicles, I would even argue that the impacts associated with the traffic with this facility could be less than that of seven homes. Many of the comments that have been made claim that the site is incompatible with the rural nature of the surrounding uses because it is in itself a commercial facility. Again, staff disagrees with that overall claim that this is a rural community that is devoid of any necessary infrastructure. Two of the most important infrastructure requirements are access to domestic water and transportation and access to roadways. The site itself is located directly adjacent to State Highway Route 202, and the project will require domestic water service from the Golden Hills CSD. In addition to the many residential properties in the area, the site itself is also in close proximity to two churches which are located just east of the project site. The county of Kern is required, as part of our housing element, to provide necessary facilities to meet the need for low-income and elderly residents, and while I appreciate the comments that the facility could be located in the city of Tehachapi, developments within the city boundaries do not meet the county's requirements to allow for these facilities in the unincorporated areas that we are responsible for covering. And again, while I understand the desire of the surrounding residents to retain their visual view sheds, there is no established visual easement over the property, and this development is similar to the churches that are located east of the site. The claim that implementation of the project would result in reduced property value is a concern that has been raised to your commission on many occasions. Based on the comments that I have seen, I would consider this argument speculative in nature and not supported by any sufficient evidence that has been provided to staff. Again, that is provided that implementation of the project is constructed in the manner as it is mitigated and as a condition of approval that are proposed this evening. In response to the comments that were received for this project, for the original project, staff did step back and prepare a mitigated negative declaration to analyze all the potential impacts associated with this project. Based on that analysis, it was determined by staff that no significant impacts would result with adherence to the required mitigation measures and conditions of approval. Now, you did receive an addendum tonight, and staff is proposing some revised conditions. Again, the purpose of these clarifications are to provide clear direction to the project applicant as to what is required prior to operations of the facility, and I'd just like to highlight what those proposed changes are. They're located on page two and three of your addendum staff report, which has also been posted to the county website. The first revision is to condition 5K. Staff is actually requesting this condition be deleted. This was a condition that we received before the nitrate mounding study was done, when the project was originally proposed. Since we received that condition, this study was prepared, and there, as a typo, this condition got put into this condition, or these proposed conditions, but that study has already been prepared and therefore is no longer needed. The second condition is condition 5-0. We received comments from Caltrans indicating that implementation of this project cannot produce any more stormwater that the historic levels already indicate on State Route 202. Staff is just proposing some clarifying language to specify that that is in fact the case, and then we are requiring the final study that is approved, the final drainage analysis and study that is done and approved by the Public Works Department be provided to Caltrans for their review, so that they can see that no additional storm runoff is-- for their review so that they can see that no additional storm runoff is being generated onto their right-of-way. Condition five P is a comment that was not needed. This was an inadvertent mistake that we did not need to have. This project is not identified to have or result in any release of hazardous or waste substances, and therefore, any of those issues would be covered under existing law, and we do not believe that this condition was required. Additionally, condition seven A one, staff is adding, this is related to the improvements that are required on Shout Road, staff is proposing to add a sentence at the very end that says, "In consultation with the Kirk County Public Works Department, additional dedication of Bacchus Lane may be required to ensure that the knuckle reconstruction is to our Kern County standards." So again, that's just to make sure that if, in fact, the dedication is also required, that that is done right at Bacchus Lane to ensure that the knuckle is as safe as it can be and meets all of our county standards. And then finally, staff is adding condition seven in, and this basically specifies that prior to issuance of any final occupancy, the project proponent will have to provide to staff the appropriate documentation showing that they have received their state license as they are providing assisted living waiver services. And again, that would help to make sure that the project is managed as required by the state. And so staff is requiring that that be provided to us before any final issuance of occupancy permit is provided or is issued by the staff. As your commission is aware, implementation of the CUP requires the adoption of the following five findings. First, the proposed use is consistent with the goals and policies of the applicable general and specific plan. Second, that the proposed use is consistent with the purpose of the applicable district or districts. Third, the proposed use is listed as a use subject to a conditional use permit in the applicable zoning district or districts, or a use determined to be similar as a listed conditional use. Four, the proposed use meets the minimum requirements of this title applicable for use. And five, that the proposed use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the public or the property and the residents in the vicinity. Pages twelve through fifteen of your staff report outline those responses and the specific findings. Based on the information contained in the staff report and as further provided by me in this presentation, staff does believe that your commission can make the required findings necessary to approve the proposed project. In conclusion, staff does believe that all of the required compatibility findings can be made to authorize the use of the facility as proposed with the revisions as I have presented to you this evening and are incorporated into your addendum staff report. Implementation of the project will require appropriate street improvements to Shout Road, including off-site improvements to Shout Road knuckle, which will serve as the access to the site and additional access to the adjacent church. The project site is subject to dark sky principles and the dark sky ordinance, so any lighting will be shielded and directed away from adjacent properties. Staff does not believe that the proposed request is fundamentally incompatible with the existing uses in the area or the adopted Greater Tatchpe Specific Area Community Plan that has been suggested. Development of the site will help to further the goals and requirements associated with our adopted housing element, which is part of the specific plan, and the proximity of the site next to State Route 202 is an ideal location for this type of development as it provides direct access to the community at large. For all these reasons, staff is recommending approval of this project, and I'd like to read the recommended revised recommendation for your commission's consideration today. Staff is recommending that your commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration and adopt the mitigation measure monitoring program, approving the conditional use permit number ten, map number one sixty-five twenty-six, in accordance with the revised recommended conditions, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached revised draft resolution. That completes my presentation. I do know that the applicant is available to give their presentation and provide comments to your commission as well.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Madam Clerk, I would request the applicant is online if they'd like to speak upon the
Yes, Bob Swanson and Ken Mailer are on the line. If you can dial star six to unmute yourself.
Please state your name and spelling of your last name, please.
Bob, are you there? If you could, could you star six to unmute your line so that you can provide your comments Chairman Judge, through the chair, well, Chairman Judge, Chairman Judge. Through the chair, you are the chair. For some reason, Mr. Swanson is not on the line, so what I would recommend is that we continue with public presentation, and then staff will subsequently contact Mr. Swanson to see what is going on and see if he can call back into that line. But I would recommend then, at this time, that you take comments from members of the public, and then we can kind of go through and identify the speaking order.
Yep, it sounds like a good idea, Mr. Murphy. So what we'll do is open the public presentation, allowing any members that want to speak on this project. And Madam Clerk, can you let us know who our first speaker will be tonight?
Chairman Judge, there are seven individuals who have requested to speak. Up first is Carol Johnson. Can you please dial star six on your phone to unmute yourself?
And Carol, please, for the record, spell out your last name for us. Carol Johnson, are you on the line?
Chairman Judge, we show that she's on the line. Ms. Johnson, if you could star six and unmute your line so you can provide your comments. If not, I would recommend that we just continue on, and then we can go back to Ms. Johnson after we've gone through our list.
Okay, ma'am, please move on to the next presenter, please.
Next is Ruben Alivas.
Mr. Alivas, if you could star six, unmute yourself, and please spell out your last name for the record. Are we possibly having some technical difficulties?
Chairman Judge, not that I am aware of. We can move on to the next person on the list, which is Eileen Bandi.
Eileen Bandi. Can you please star six, unmute yourself, and spell out your last name for the record, please?
Hi, this is Eileen Bandi. I was, but you have tech, because I was completely from the station, and I had to dial back. So, and I have a feeling that that happened to a lot of us.
Okay, thanks for clarification, Mrs. Bandi. We have you on the line now, so if you could, please provide your comments for us, or the commission may be able to hear your comments tonight.
Yes, I'm in support of this facility. I only live three houses away from this facility, and I believe that this is good for our community. I think that it's a positive thing and that we don't have enough senior housing in our area. Being a senior myself, I would like to, and living in Tehachapi for over thirty years, I feel that this is a positive thing. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Bandi. Appreciate your comments. Madam Clerk, can we move on to our next caller?
Should I unmute now?
You could mute yourself now, Mrs. Bandi. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Chairman Judge, we are reporting that we're having some difficulty with people being on the line, so we will go to the next person on the list. Corinne Stone, if you're on the line, can you please dial star six to unmute yourself?
Mrs. Stone, if you could, please spell your last name for the record.
If Ms. Stone is not on the line, Jessica Eaton is next.
Do we have Ms. Jessica Eaton on the line?
I believe Ms. Stone is on the line now.
Okay, so I'm hearing that Mrs. Stone is on the line. Mrs. Stone, if you could try speaking up for us, please. We do hear someone, but we are having muffled sounds, so if you could please try speaking up, Mrs. Stone.
This is Bob Swanson. I don't know if you can hear me. I finally got dialed back in.
Okay, so Bob, give us one quick second. So it looks like Mrs. Stone is on the line. We are gonna then, since Bob has came on the line, I'd say we allow you to speak, Bob, on your project. Please state your last name for the record.
Okay, me now?
Yes, Bob.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioners, this is Bob Swanson with Swanson Engineering. We're here tonight to request your approval for our thirty-two-bed assisted-living retirement facility in the Tatchpe area. We believe this project will provide an opportunity for a few of the elderly residents in the county to share the same experiences and opportunities of country living that are enjoyed by many of the residents of the rural mountain community. As our population ages, it is more difficult for many people to live independently, especially in a rural setting. This facility will allow its residents to enjoy snow, wildlife, clean air, and mountain living in a safe environment. Our goal with this project is to cause minimal disturbance to the neighboring residents. We agreed to rotate our building orientations at their request and move them toward the east property line. We also revised the entrance into the facility from Shout Road in the south to Bacchus Road along the east side. We will be installing, as Craig said, an upgraded septic system to increase the removal of harmful nitrates into the groundwater. We'll also be abandoning an onsite water well. We've had discussions with the Golden Hills Community Service District regarding annexation in order to receive drinking water and fire protection. We are currently adjacent to the Golden Valley Community Service District boundary to the east, which includes the church. We tried to address the neighbors' concerns regarding traffic, lighting, and aesthetics. This facility will be designed to resemble a mountain cabin with a use of wood and rock materials to fit in with the rural atmosphere of the area. We appreciate your time in reviewing our project and would appreciate approval of our conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's try again. Who do we have on next?
Corinne Stone is up next. Ms. Stone, if you could please dial star six on your phone to unmute yourself.
Mr. Swanson, you're still on, can you mute yourself with the question star six?
Hello?
Hi, Mrs. Stone, there you are. Yes, we can hear you, ma'am.
Okay, what happened? You dropped us earlier.
Could you please spell your last name for the record, please?
Pardon me?
Would you mind spelling your last name for the record?
I'm still upset. My name is Corinne Stone, S-T-O-N-E.
Thank you, Mrs. Stone. Go ahead.
Okay, but let me start by telling you why I'm upset. Do you realize that you dropped me and my neighbor Kathleen Dunn from the conference call earlier?
Ma'am, again, we are doing it to make sure everyone gets their ability to comment, which you are doing now, so we'd love to hear your comments.
My husband and I, Rob Stone and I, live directly across the street from this section that Ken Mailer is attempting to get the conditional use permit on. And I'm sorry, I'm still upset. At any rate, I did not hear all of the presentation that Mr. Murphy just made, but I'm sure that it was glorious, made it sound like a beautiful thing. But what I want to say to you, first of all, is that I know you are used to looking at larger projects, you are looking at big areas in the county and in the city of Bakersfield, and we're just a little drop in the bucket up here. But we're human beings, and we matter. And you're looking at a tiny little piece of dirt in a small and insignificant part of the county, and you're being asked to approve a conditional use permit to change the usage of that little pie-shaped wedge. It's currently zoned for a single-family residence, just like all the other lots around it, with the exception of a couple of churches. And by the way, in part of the staff report, I saw that there was a reference to, or a comparison, to the large Baptist church. And I want to say that there is no comparison with a church that holds services on Sundays and some evening events and has schoolchildren attending during the day and then going home at night. And you cannot compare that kind of a usage with thirty-two adults, twenty-four-seven, plus their caregivers, who would be there, utilize the water and the septic needs twenty-four-seven. You cannot do that. It is not a fair comparison. At any rate, you're being asked to approve the conditional use permit, and I say, well, hey, why not? Why not just go ahead and grant it? It would be easy to do. It would put more tax dollars into county coffers. It would look good on the quota to build more senior housing units in the county. But I think that what it really do is it put a lot of money into the pockets of Ken Mailer, the applicant, for this horrible proposal, and I think that that's probably his end goal. What it would not do is to satisfy the concerns of all of the residents whose homes surround the site of this proposed monstrosity of a commercial mill. Why would a reasonable person want to put thirty-two elderly people with assisted living needs jammed into a space designed to support a single family? Think what it's like, think back to what it's like, have a family with teenagers and little kids in one home, and now you're looking at putting thirty-two people plus their caregivers. And why would you jeopardize the health and welfare of all those residents and all of the residents in the surrounding neighborhoods by putting their water wells and water tables at risk? Historically, you find that even a single well, which is sunk too deeply, can cause problems for other wells nearby. And I heard the presentation a few minutes ago asserting that water services would be provided by Golden Hills. I don't see that anywhere. Everything I see is only if they are annexed by Golden Hills. And then if you look a little deeper, you see that Golden Hills is not saying that there's any certainty at all that they are likely to be able to annex them. There's water shortages, and they don't look too favorably upon annexing a large facility like this.
Mrs. Stone, we also have a few more callers, so I'm gonna allow you one more minute on your comments so we can get to everyone tonight, so.
Pardon me?
I said we have many callers, and we're allowed two minutes per call, so I'll give you one more minute to wrap up your comments for this evening.
Okay, let me just wrap it up quickly. I could go on, but I just want to call your attention, if I could, to page twenty-eight of your staff report. If you take a look at that, you'll see it's the map of the properties in the so-called petition opposing this cup. And you'll see that it's completely, that the site is completely surrounded by residents who oppose this project, and that's forty-one individuals, all of the people living around the area in question. And that's 41 individuals, all of the people living around the area in question. And in fact, there's not been any support shown for this cup in the four years that Ken Mailer has been pursuing it. And I just want to say, please pay attention to the people. You have statistics and reports and experts and so forth. And you may think that this is just a little piece of dirt in a small insignificant area with only a few people complaining, but look at the whole picture. It's the entire neighborhood that's saying no. Will you please listen and reject this proposal once and for all? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stone. Madam Clerk, who do we have next on the call?
Jessica Eaton is on the line.
Mrs. Eaton, will you please spell out your last name for the record? And hit star six to unmute yourself, please.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, it's Eaton, E.A.T.O.N.
Go ahead, Ms. Eaton.
All right. Okay, okay. I would just like to support or express my full support for Mr. Mailer's project here in Tehachapi. I'm a longtime citizen of this community, and I feel as though this is a facility that is much needed and overdue. And we, as a family, just experienced a situation where a facility like this would have been much to our advantage, and we would have very much enjoyed getting to spend some quality time with our loved one back when she was doing better and not needing a higher-skill facility. But we had spent a lot of time in Bakersfield, and we didn't get to spend as much time with her as we would have liked. Had something like this been closer, we would have been very, very grateful for that opportunity. And I feel as though that the last caller who just called in is kinda making a statement of apples to oranges here, and she says it's very insignificant. However, I think it is significant. I think that this is very lacking in our community, and I think it's about time that a facility like this is put in place. And to be quite honest, the size of it, I think, is very underestimated for the need of our community. It's unfortunate. I wish it was larger. I think that, you know, we're a family community up here, family-oriented, lots of different ages here in our community, and with an aging population. And I think that, quite honestly, a bigger facility is probably needed. However, I know it won't hold, you know, a larger amount of people in that facility, but I think the access is perfect. I think the environment for people who are going to be living there, which are very quiet people, the 24-hour care is not a big deal. These are quiet, non-troublemaking people. I feel like the school, the church school next to it with the children playing and things are much more of a noise disturbance than this facility would ever offer. And I am in full support. I hope every one of you vote for it, and I think that it would be irresponsible to vote against this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eaton. Madam Clerk, and star six to unmute yourself again, please.
Chairman Judge Kathleen Dunn is on the line.
Mrs. Dunn, will you please spell your last name for the record? And star six to unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Kathleen Dunn Burke. It's D.U.N.N., B.U.R.K.E. I am in opposition of the project. I think it's a good idea. It's a very bad location. My husband and I own a home within about 1,000, 1,500 feet of the proposed facility. And as you may know, we are about four years into fighting this proposal, and certainly with each year, it's become more of a challenge and really has gone from bad to worse, and it just continues to have problems. The problems that we are concerned about, as Mr. Murphy indicated, are described in our most recent opposition letter. But I remind the commissioners that the letter is signed by over 40 nearby property owners. These are carved out in red on the aerial map. I believe it's on page 28. So it's very clear that the immediately adjacent neighbors are in opposition. And this actually represents the bulk of the residents, again, in the immediate surrounding area, not three houses away, 10 houses away, someone who wants to have a convenient area for a family member. These are immediate neighbors who live here. And that seven-page letter, for your convenience, I believe, is attached at the end of the staff report. So I would continue to lobby that there's really no way to fix many of the problems cited. One of the key problems, as Corinne Stone mentioned, is water, and I believe Mr. Murphy indicated that there would be water. The staff report indicates nothing of the sort. Golden Hills has not approved any water. Golden Hills actually now borrows water to service our existing needs. And so from this, we can expect a rate hike. And certainly for the neighbors on well water, well, I think they're either going to have to dig deeper or run dry and find another solution. And this is all going to cost money. We know that the neighborhood is currently zoned for a board and care home that accommodates up to six residents, and we champion this. And this is an option now for the applicant, and it doesn't require a cup, and it would help meet the needs for our community to support our elderly residents. An oversized facility like this, the heinous of an assisted living facility is just not the solution. And, you know, simple math shows the applicant can expect to conservatively earn over a million dollars a year with this facility. So it's serious business. It's really a massive for-profit facility that belongs in an urban area with services that can support it the way it needs to be supported. We're not set up for this kind of high-density living. Again, it's really a good idea, but a bad location. It's too much building on way too small of a lot. You can see by the plot map that he's squeezing every inch out of that little lot, and it's in way too remote of an area. And I remind you that there's plenty, plenty of county land nearby, already zoned commercial for this type of purpose, to build this size of a facility. And so for that reason, I strongly encourage you to reject this proposal once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, who do we have next?
Chairman Judge Carol Johnson is on the line.
Okay, Mrs. Johnson, do you please spell out your last name for the record? And star six to unmute yourself, please.
Johnson, J.O.H.N.S.O.N.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mrs. Johnson.
Okay, I would just like to say that I absolutely support this project. The project proposes to have an assisted living facility in a natural, normalized area of the county. It will be attractive. It would not be enormous. The elderly need support just like each one of us. Change is always difficult, but we need to embrace change to meet the needs of our elderly population. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Judge Ruben Alivas is next on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Alivas. Please spell your last name for the record and star six to unmute yourself. Mr. Alivas?
Chairman Judge, the last registered individual that wishes to speak is Raymond Memoli.
Okay, moving on to Raymond Memoli. Mr. Raymond, will you mind spelling your last name for the record? Mr. Raymond?
Maybe he's not pressing star six to unmute.
Let's try this again. Mr. Memoli, if you're on the line, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hello, there you are, sir. Please spell your last name for the record.
It's Memoli, M.E.M.O.L.I.
All right, thank you.
Is it okay to go?
Yes, sir.
All right. Yeah, I'd just like to say that I support this thing 100%. I've worked with Ken a lot. He's a first-class guy, wouldn't do anything with bad taste. It is next to a huge church, which supports a lot more people than this facility would. We definitely need something like this in the community. The community's growing, as everybody knows, and it is, it's always hard for change like this, but I've seen the plans. I've looked at it, where it's at. It's in a good access area for emergency vehicles, anything necessary. I don't know why it wouldn't work where it's at. And as far as the water situation, I know Golden Hills has made an attempt to supply water. I know it's not set yet, but I think that probably would happen. And yeah, I'd just like to say we're in full support of it, so thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Madam Clerk, I think we still have not heard from Ruben Alivas. Is he still on the line? If he's not on the line...
Chairman Judge, it does not appear he's on the line, or he does not wish to speak. So that concludes the registered individuals for this item.
Okay, thank you for that. So with that being said, I will close the public presentation portion of this item and only allow calls to come back in if any of the members of the fellow commission would like to speak to the applicant on the project. So moving with that, any fellow commissioners would like to comment on this project? I have Commissioner McGiffney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just had a couple of questions. What is the water requirement for this facility in terms of gallons per day or per month as far as the projection on that?
I believe it'd be most appropriate... Commissioner McGiffney through the chair, I believe it'd be most appropriate to ask our project applicant that specific question right at this time. I don't have that information right in front of me.
That's why I was hoping to hear from the applicant, if they knew that.
This is Bob Swanson, the project engineer. The approximate water use for a full-time resident of the plumbing code is around 120 gallons a day.
And is this property, I mean, actually, designed of the water? Have you looked at water use at the whole property? Have you looked at zero escaping, that kind of thing?
We will. The conditions are used, so water use in native areas. And as far as the water use, we will, we've worked with Golden Valley, I mean, Golden Hills, talked with them, and found out what the conditions are in order to annex and get a water supply from them.
So to clarify, this is the one property in the area that's not annexed to that? It's just sitting there by itself? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, I think Golden Hills doesn't serve water to all the people around this area. They buy the tract leave, and then the church annex onto that, and we're adjacent to the church. We're contiguous to their district, but don't serve all of this area right now.
And what is the current disposition of this property? I guess, Mr. Murphy, this has been vacant property for a long time, not developed because of water or some other reason?
Commissioner McGiffney through the chair. I can't specify as to why the property has or has not been developed. You know, that's up to individual property owners. To try to help provide some additional context in your questioning, too, I'd just like to offer a few different things. So when we adopted the Greater Tehachapi Specific Area and Community Plan in 2010, one of the things that we looked through is where is development going to incur within this larger community? You know, this plan area covers, well, not in the unincorporated city of Tehachapi, it covers the area around that. It covers Golden Hills, Stallion Springs, it covers Bear Valley Springs, and so we looked at that area in its entirety. We actually do have a policy in there that we encourage and somewhat require that any discretionary action hook up to public services. We believe that it was appropriate to ensure that we don't have development that occurs in super-outlying areas that are reliant on groundwater, that they connect to these areas of the CSD that service these waters. This community is subject to three different groundwater basins, which have all been adjudicated. There is a water master that helps oversee all of the water in the area, and then each of the CSDs, that water master works with those CSDs to ensure that they are not pumping more water than what they're allowed to under the provisions of the adjudication and under the direction of the water master. To answer the questions of the residents, and if it wasn't oversight, no, staff is requiring that if this project is built, it needs to connect to a public services facility to get public water. And I am prepared to add some condition language to condition 5A to help ensure that if this project doesn't get that annexation and they don't connect to this public water supply, then we would not allow them to get building permits for the particular project. But to answer the overall question, the individual CSDs, in their coordination with the water master, are the ones that manage groundwater for those particular areas. And if we have a will serve letter that says they can provide that service, then, you know, that is something that they have worked out, and, again, with the water master and then the board of that CSD. And the applicant will have to go through the appropriate annexation process. And again, that's not an uncommon project, whether you're in Tehachapi area, whether you're in Bakersfield. Anytime that we have that, if it was in the service boundary already, then maybe they would have been developed. Who knows what that reason could have been? But it is not uncommon to have a project considered that is not yet annexed into their boundaries. But by us putting that condition, that helps give assurance that if the annexation does not occur and they are not provided that domestic water supply, then the project couldn't be built as it's proposed. So again, I am prepared, should it be your commission's desire, to add additional language just to clarify for the residents and for everybody else, that requirement to Golden Hills CSD is a requirement to get this project facilitated and built.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I was less concerned about the traffic and everything because of the nature of the residents versus the density of the residents in that area because of lack of water. And, you know, you're putting a fair amount of people in a limited space in terms of water. That's why I said 120 gallons, that's a pretty fair amount for one house, let alone, you know, for several times that amount. So I would think that's a good condition to add because it would ensure that there would be enough water for that many people. Granted, if there's zero escaping and other things, that, you know, the water usage could be conserved a lot better, maybe for a facility like this, it probably would be because it's a larger facility, it's an economy of scale. But I would definitely like to see that conditioning, just to make sure that would work for these residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McGiffney. I will now turn to Commissioner Ashley.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. A few things from me. I think, I remember this project when it came before us before. I agree with the improvements that have been made. I also agree with Ms. Eaton's statements that this is not some insignificant thing. This is my neighborhood. I drive by this spot every single day. I know that that little Shout Road knuckle piece is a horrible, you know, just a crazy little zigzag in the road. I think the improvements that this project will make will actually make that better for everyone who travels that way, myself included. I agree that this is something that is needed, and, you know, although it is being suggested that we move this into some, air quotes, "compatible" area, I don't think commercial is where we see these types of facilities. If we look in Bakersfield, we see that there are multimillion-dollar homes in not-so-far proximity away from this type of facility. So I'm in full support. I do like the addition of the condition, modification of condition 5A. I think, and that would help alleviate some of the neighbors' problems with water and having the will serve from the Community Services District next door. I think we can work through the water piece, but I think it's a good project. I'm in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sprague?
Yes. Chairman, I'd like to ask staff what the sewer situation...
...house on it, but there may be some specific provision that I'm just not aware of at the top of my head that may require the connection.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. And my reason for that question was, is I know water is an issue here and been raised multiple times, and I think that, I hear the concerns of the residents. It's something that, obviously, anytime a facility comes in a community, I think all residents, you know, have to have understanding of the project. I want to commend staff, I think you've done a great job on presenting this project, presenting the conditions, and going back to address the concerns of the community... the conditions, and going back to address the concerns of the community. I will say that I am in agreement with Commissioner McGiffney, something that is needed in the community. I feel the concern that does come up with traffic is minimized due to the fact that these residents are coming to this facility not to be, have many vehicles of their own, not be traveling in and out too much on their own as well, they'll get public transportation from the facility. I think that this can add a good use in the community, and I want to, again, commend staff for doing a good job on this project, and I am in support of this project. With that being said, there's no other comments for commissioners, I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would commend staff and also Mr. Swanson's group for putting this project together and being very patient with it, and trying to meet all the conditions...
...Services Department, Environmental Health Division, the project shall require domestic water to be provided by the Golden Hills CSD upon appropriate annexation. So that would be the revised condition that I would recommend for your commission to consider. The other thing I just want to note before your commission takes action is I have been informed that our video is going in and out, and so while I believe that everybody was able to provide their public testimony, there may be individuals that are watching that the video is being cut out, and then coming back in and things along those lines. So I just wanted to make sure that I was informed that that is, having some technical glitches with the video that is being shown to residents. I just want to make sure your commission was aware of that before you took any final actions.
Mr. Murphy, thanks for clarification, but I do believe that all the individuals that didn't want to speak on this project have been heard and did call in, their comments were put on the record. So I believe even with the video coming in and out, I think all the public was allowed to speak openly on this project. So I would be comfortable moving forward with a motion if...
So, Mr. Chairman, I would restate my motion, that I would make a motion to approve the project based on the information put into the record by staff, along with Mr. Murphy's revision regarding the water being hooked up to fulfill the object of the site and the project as read into the record.
Thank you, I will take a second.
I'll second that motion.
Four ayes, one no.
Seeing that this is a conditional use permit, there's a right to appeal for the project, and I will turn to Mr. Murphy to read the rights of appeal.
Thank you, Chairman Judge. For projects where the planning commission action is final, those actions are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person, and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until after the final date of appeal. An appeal may be filed with the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department, located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $540 on forms that we have available at the department and on the website. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including the hearing. If no appeal is received, the action of your commission is final. I would note, just for the record, that according to our K-Gov staff, the information is going in, it's just being buffering, which is kind of causing the cut, but the information is going on. But we will make sure, from a staff perspective, to contact the individual residents that we have phone numbers for that expressed opposition, to make sure that they are aware of the appeal process, in case they don't see this part that comes through the video.
Mr. Murphy, thank you for that clarification, thank you for making sure that residents get the full information that's required, we reached out to them. Now, moving on to item number five, conditional use permit number 27, map 196. Mr. Murphy, mind commenting on this project?
Thank you, Chairman Judge. We're actually going to have a staff presentation from Ms. Katrina Slaton.
Mrs. Slaton, I'm looking forward to your presentation.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. It's good to see you all again. So tonight I am presenting to you a project that consists of modifications to previously approved Solidad Mountain Project by Golden Queen Mining Company LLC. Okay, so the proposed project is an approximate 2,009-acre site, a portion of which is currently being mined, located approximately two miles west of State Route 14, north and south of Silver Queen Road, in an unincorporated area of southeastern Kern County. The project is within the boundary of the Kern County General Plan and the Solidad Mountain, Elephant Butte, and vicinity south of Mojave-specific plan. So as shown on this figure, the modified project consists of three individual contiguous permit sites, consisting of private and federal land administered by the Bureau of Land Management. A breakdown of the project site by private and federal land is shown on Figure 4 of your staff report. Approximately 22 acres of the modified project site is located within a FEMA-designated flood zone, Flood Zone A, indicating that it could be inundated during a 100-year flood event. This area is immediately south of the Silver Queen Road in the vicinity of Holt Street. From reviewing aerial photographs, staff has concluded that there are approximately four residential structures located within 400 feet of the project boundaries. Specifically, two structures are located on the north side of Silver Queen Road, west of Holt Street, and two structures are located southeast of the intersection of Silver Queen Road and Holt Street. The action before your commission tonight pertains to the modification of these three conditional use permits, which comprise of the Solidad Mountain Project, which allow for the existing surface mining and reclamation plan. A summary of the 1997 and 2010 approvals, and the current proposal is as follows. In 1997, the Kern County and Bureau of Land Management approved the Solidad Mountain Project and its requested discretionary approvals, including CUP number 41, map number 213, CUP number 22, map 214, and just those two, for surface mining and reclamation plan. The 1997 EIR/ES sequo document analyzed gold, silver, and aggregate surface mining operations at Solidad Mountain. In 2010, the Kern County Board of Supervisors approved the revised Solidad Mountain Project and certified the Solidad Mountain Project final supplemental EIR sequo document. Discretionary approvals included CUP number 27, map number 126, and modifications of the existing CUPs. Full-scale mining operations commenced in 2015 and have continued since that time. The modified project is summarized as follows. As proposed, the total amount of material mined would be approximately 24 million tons per year compared to the 30 million tons per year analyzed and approved in 1997. No changes are proposed to existing mining methods, processing systems, or facilities, operating hours, or traffic volumes. Reclamation under the modified project will be improved compared to the 1997 project in that it will address all disturbed areas of the 1997 project, proposed to only reclaiming 419 of the 930 acres to be disturbed. Proposed modifications to the disturbance footprint are proposed as shown in this figure, with the yellow areas showing new disturbance areas and solid green areas being removed from previously analyzed disturbance areas. Table 1 on pages 3 through 6 of your staff report provides a summary comparison between the 1997, 2010, and current modified projects. Regarding the existing conditions of approval, the only proposed revisions from those approved in 2010 are described on pages 7 and 8 of the staff report and Page 2 of your addendum. They consist of revising two existing conditions and adding three new ones. Staff notes the required discretionary approvals needed for the modified project also include a reclamation plan amendment for the Solidad Mountain Project. The department approved the reclamation plan amendment earlier this year after undertaking the necessary consultation with the State Department of Conservation, Division of Mine Reclamation. The reclamation plan is not subject to review or approval by your commission tonight. The project has an approved access route from Silver Queen Road and Mojave-Tropical Road. Access to the site will continue to be provided via the following access points. From the south side of Silver Queen Road, east of the intersection of Silver Queen and Holt Street. From the east side of Holt Street, north of the intersection with Silver Queen. From New Eagle Road, accessing the north side of the project area. From Mojave-Tropical Road, accessing the southwest side. And from Meyer Road to an existing road accessing the east side of the project. An addendum to the previously certified 1997 Environmental Impact Report and subsequent 2010 Supplemental Environmental Impact Report was prepared for the modified project in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. The addendum to the previously certified EIR, the 2010 Supplemental EIR, and the 1997 EIR have been provided to your commission and posted on the department's website. Pages 2 through 12 of your staff report provide a summary of the environmental determinations included within the EIR documents. The proposed mitigation measure monitoring program, listing all of the recommended mitigation measures, has been attached to your staff report as Exhibit C for your review. The only proposed change from the 2010 Supplemental EIR is additional text to mitigation measure 29, which is also condition of approval number 40, in response to comments from the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians. While most of the project impacts can be reduced to less than significant levels with implementation of the required mitigation measures, the 2010 Supplemental EIR established that implementation of the project would result in the following significant and unavoidable impacts. Significant cumulative air quality impacts as a result of NOx emissions. Significant cumulative impacts to biological resources as a result of potential loss of burrowing owl habitat. Significant project level and cumulative impacts to mineral resources. And significant project level and cumulative impacts to the topography as a result of modification of the natural ground contours. A hearing notice for the modified project was circulated in accordance with the required timeframes, and stated that the application and addendum are on file in the office of the department. Additionally, the addendum was provided with the staff report prepared for tonight's hearing. During the course of processing this request, staff notified all affected agencies, county departments, and property owners within 1,000 feet of the project area. As a result of that notification, staff did receive nine comment letters. Three of these have been provided to your commission as attachments to the staff report. The other six comments arrived after preparation of that staff report, and have such been included as attachments to the addendum to your staff report. A summary of these comments and responses are included in your staff report and addendum. In addition to the agency and interested parties' comments received, staff did receive a comment letter from Ms. Houle, as she stated, expressing concerns related to the project's contribution to erosion of local roads and an increase in rodents. I would like to take a minute to respond to Ms. Houle's concerns. Regarding erosion of local roads, mitigation measures have been incorporated and included as conditions of approval, requiring site drainage be inspected to assure that excessive erosion is not occurring. In the event that excessive erosion is identified, the site drainage plan is to be revised in consultation with the county. It should be known that the site drainage plan is designed to minimize potential runoff and ensure stormwater management features are implemented to minimize erosion. Staff notes that a site drainage plan has been prepared that directs drainage away from slopes and into several ponds within the project site, and also includes a network of berms near the Gold Town area to serve to capture and retain stormwater on-site. The county's Public Works Department inspects permitted mines on an annual basis. Any violations related to offsite drainage would be noted in the annual inspection report. The most recent annual inspection report published, which happens to be for 2019, summarizes that drainage control structures have been constructed. Additionally, it should be noted that a natural drainage, as shown on the mapped FEMA floodplain map, flows directly through the Gold Town subdivision. While runoff flows may have caused damage to the private roads in the area, as she claims, there is no reason to believe that the project operations contributed to the damage of these roads. Last, there is no evidence to suggest that the ongoing mining activities, particularly the blasting during the daylight hours, are causing displacement of mice, rats, and snakes at night. The rodents and even snakes commented on are common wildlife species in the Mojave Desert. And an additional concern as it relates to rodents was raised regarding their ability to carry diseases, and alleges that the rodents may be connected to COVID-19. Rodents can carry disease, however, staff is not aware of any evidence that suggests rodents are a COVID-19 vector. Staff appreciates all comments submitted, and we have reviewed the project in its entirety and believes that the proposed project has been sufficiently mitigated and conditioned to ensure compatibility with the adjacent and surrounding land. The Solidad Mountain Project has existing access, which means no new roads would be constructed as a direct result of the modified project. The project is sited within the eastern area of Kern County, especially appropriate for mining and reclamation due to the lack of dense urban development. The addendum EIR prepared for the request has concluded that there are no new potential impacts that were not covered in the previous environmental documents. The addendum has shown that the project does not include any substantial changes in the project that will result in new significant and unavoidable impacts, and the project does not include any significant new information that was not considered in the previously certified environmental documents. The project is consistent with the goals and policies of the county's adopted general and specific plan, and staff believes that your commission can make all the required findings necessary to approve the proposed modifications to the CUPs. Additionally, the project would generate approximately 200 construction jobs, and the metallic mining component of the project would generate approximately 150 to 165 jobs, and the aggregate mining component would generate about 15 jobs. So the department recommendation for this project is to adopt Section 15091 Findings of Fact and Section 15093 Statement of Overriding Considerations, adopt the mitigation measure monitoring program, approve modification of conditional use permits subject to the recommended revised conditions, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached revised draft resolutions. That completes staff's presentation. The project applicant is on the line and available to present as well.
Thank you for that presentation. And I know this item was pulled from consent by fellow commissioners. Prior to any applicant comment on the project, I would ask any commissioners if staff's report addressed any concerns that might have been mentioned prior to the pulling of this off-the-consent item.
For me, staff's report was adequate enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sprague, did staff's report address the questions you had, or do you still, would you like to hear from the applicant?
No, I'm satisfied at this point.
Seeing that, seeing no other commissioners want to comment, I would be comfortable taking a motion on this item.
Motion to approve as read to record.
Second?
I'll second.
I'll defer to Commissioner Skidmore on that one.
I think Commissioner Skidmore has a second.
All ayes.
Being a conditional use permit, there's a notice of right to appeal on this item. I'll turn Mr. Murphy to review that right of appeal.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. For projects where the planning commission action is final, those actions are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person, and no development proposed by the application may be authorized until after the final date of appeal. An appeal may be filed with the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department, located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $540 on forms we have available at the department and on our website. That filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of this hearing. If no appeal is received, the action of your commission is final.
Thank you for that. And I'm moving on to adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meaning of the adjourn. All right, meaning of adjourn.